All right. I think we're at seven, we'll start with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're off now. All right, first thing up is, we have a public hearing, this is kind of on the proposed, on the proposed fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget, we have an opportunity to just comment, ten council may adopt the budget, we will without amendment by the Department of Commerce. Okay, so, the public hearing is open at seven oh two, does anyone have any comments on that? All right. Motion to close the public hearing. Motion closed, or a second?
One second.
Second, hold in favor. Okay, there you go, thank you. All right, next up, we have a public hearing, a public hearing is kind of on the proposed, combined public tax rate of thirty cents, we have an opportunity to just comment, so, this is our same tax rate, we're not changing the tax rate, some of you perhaps, but in the sense it is. Any questions? All right.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, I motion to, I motion to close the public hearing on the tax rate, do you have a second?
Yes.
Just wait a second, okay, hold in favor. Okay, very good. All right, next up, we have visitor citizens forum, someone who's kind of a blue collar of gays, who, who, all right, next up on the regular agenda, consideration resolution for the appointment of one of the board managers of the Denco nine one one, and so, we have us, I'm sorry.
Jim Carter.
I had it, I had it, it took my time. Yes, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, thank you, counsel, and thank you, happy to be here tonight, visit with your guests here before, and, and that every time I pass on the highway, if I've got someone with me, I certainly recommend to show him your beautiful village, initial lovely village, and how you enjoy living here, and all that. Here tonight, to ask you for your support for the Denco nine one one, I'm on the board now for four years, and, my background, I gave you some information, I did, I sent you an email a couple of, a few months, a few weeks ago, and I'm particularly dedicated to that, I'll tell you tonight, and also, I love my name, it's attached, it's attached to that particular town, then I've given you some information about voting, two years ago, when I ran again, there were four people that ran, thirty of the cities voted, thirty municipalities, your vote counts, woman, listed vote counts one, then vote counts one, everybody gets a side vote at Denco, thirty cities voted, there are votes, four people, I've got twenty seven thirty, and the other three, Bell and Beach, and from the town that they live there, I've given you the list of voting so far this election year, it's a little bit updated, I think there's been, it's a past fourteen municipalities have voted so far, not that much enough to get all forty to vote, so, I think it shows that I've worked well with the city, my background is to have advanced, and also, working at the airport club for fourteen years, and been involved in that, and from nine one one, it's doing extremely well, we're one of the finest nine one one organizations for the state of Texas, and in fact, nationally, we're the only nine one one organization that's going into the next generation of nine one one, and what that basically does is help identify where the call, the nine one one originated, it's a bad statistic, but nationwide, ten thousand people nationwide called in, and are not found before the problem, that they have a problem, and that's, that's an extreme problem, there was a, a statistic is interesting, it's about four hundred and forty million nine one one calls each year nationally, we had, then we had an average of about one thousand a day, as we, we've got a population of forty-nine hundred thousand, that's not too much, I can send those calls on your cell phone, and of course, we're funded by charge to between telephones, and that's what it is, we just recently built a new facility in annex to the facility we have, that was very expensive because of the construction, that we put into it to protect against high wind, and full of fifty pounds of power, and that's what we're doing, but you need that, we've got responders that are depending on communication, don't want that communication to be, and of course, terrorist possibilities, this could be a back-up or ESEL, ESEL meaning Public Service and Replanting, anywhere else, you're right now, you're dispatched by Sheriff's Department, and the Sheriff's Department had an outlet, or couldn't get into the left facility, they can use this, the nice thing about this, it was fairly expensive, post five, you know, it was paid away, canceled, accumulated, we're doing extremely well, I appreciate you, I'll answer any question, I guess my other important thing, take a lot of your, 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 your,[465.88]
normally we put out about 210. We're about two thirds. During watering days, Monday night and Tuesday night, from 6:00 to 12:00, people are putting on their sprinklers. During that time interval, when the wells are running full on, we're putting out 140 gallons a minute are going in and about 500 gallons a minute are going out. So, when we get these watering days, what's happening is people are using their systems longer. So, we don't have enough water. So, instead of running it, when you're running it 10 minutes a zone before, everybody said, since it's two days a week, let me run it for 15 minutes, twice a week. Well, we have a supply problem. We have a problem. So, right now, on Monday and Tuesday, we're getting very close to, one tank runs dry. This tank runs dry. The fiberglass gets down to about, about a third. Overall, we're down to about 25% of our water capacity. That happens at about 1:00 in the morning. The problem we're running into now is that at about 1:00 in the morning, the wells are, the tanks are about 25% full. And then, and the wells are off. The wells come on about 6:15. Then, the wells run. And they run all night Monday and they run all day Monday. They don't turn off. They run constant all the entire day trying to catch up. And Tuesday, 6:00, when the next round of watering starts, they're not full yet. They're not, they're not there yet. So, Tuesday starts, we immediately start heading downhill again. And so, at about 2:00 in the morning, we are, again, very low on the tanks. And then, we run almost the entire day Wednesday to finally catch up and fill the tanks. The wells shut off Wednesday late afternoon. They run 48 hours straight.
Wednesday is a non-watering day, right?
Wednesday's a non-watering day.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
Exactly.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Yes, so Wednesday, Thursday are not watering days. If they were, we'd get water. We don't have the time to recover. People are using too much water. And one of the things I did do was I went ahead and I pulled the billing software. I pulled the consumption reports. So, just in case, just out of curiosity, if you're wondering. So, the average usage per street, okay, the average monthly usage. Peninsula's 9,000, Parkland's 10, Meadow Lake's 12, Lake Crest is 12, Hillside's 10, Hyridge is 15, Cary is 26, Melody is 32, Stone is 41. 41,000 gallons. So, over a thousand dollars, over a thousand gallons a day.
Per house, that's right.
Per house on Stone.
So, that's because they're watering your entire pay.
They're watering with rotors like crazy. It looks like a waterworks going off. And those sprinklers are going, they're shooting, you know, 10 feet in the air. So, we're trying to stabilize this, but we're either headed toward one day a week watering for certain streets. It's going to be, each street's going to get a day in the shores. The shores is using four times as much water as everybody else in the city. And Stone is, is out of control with their watering. So, what we're going to have to do, if it doesn't stabilize, and I'm going to make a strong pitch in the mayor's letter, then the shores, each street, the shores is going to get one day a week. It's not the rest of the town. They're doing just fine. It's just the shores. They're going too much. So, we've made some adjustments to the system, some operating adjustments with the pumps and things, but we need to get, now that we're stable, the wells are stable, the consumption is stable, but it's too hot. So, Serena had a point, I talked to her about it, you know, one possibility is, you know, the watering gets condensed again. So, you can water from 9:00 to 12:00, and that's it. Because I don't, you can murder us for three hours, but you can't run your sprinklers for five hours in a three hour window. So, in the shores, they, you know, running 20 minutes a zone for 16 or 18 zones, that's killing us. So, we may have to shrink the window, or we might have to come back and say, these three streets, this is your day to water. That's it, you know, one day.
Would it help to give a day between the two watering, so Monday, Wednesday, instead of Monday, Tuesday with that?
You know, it's, it's hot.
With the habit of recovering.
It would help. The problem, what we're trying to do is, what I'm, with the days, was that if you could water three days a week, if you're odd, let's say, you do Monday, Wednesday, Friday. If you're even, you do Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Well, with two day a week watering, just chop out the middle. So, you know, if you went to three days, you just add the middle guy back in. That was kind of the, to make it simple, rather than changing the dates again, because we're having a hell of a time of people reprogramming their sprinklers. So, you know, if you're on Monday and Wednesday, and I said, oh, now you're on Tuesday and Saturday.
Very real.
You know, the problem we have is, half the people will make the change, the other half won't, because they don't know how, and then we end up doubling up, you know, and we end up hurting ourselves again. That was the problem, we had to switch to pre-midnight, right? Because people are getting confused between two morning, what day a week that county has. So, anyway, you're right, it would, but...
But if we change the time, they self-reprogram their sprinklers. So, either way, they're going to be reprogramming, right?
That's true, but, but then if we went to three a day, you just...
Yeah, the day.
I mean, I'm hoping a different suggestion.
There's no, there's no way around it. Citizens have to participate in this, right? It's in everybody's best interest, right? It's either you throw the water on the lawn and in the yards, and you end up for the house, or you, I don't know the fact.
If you go back to your mayor's letter, do you think it would work to ask for some voluntary reduction in that volume first?
Yeah, I mean, like...
If we, we really were using too much capacity, please, everybody just cut back, especially, you know, the shores watering those huge lots. Maybe they could adjust it, just water around the house and the foundation and do the shade.
Like what I did, I only water around the foundation. What I did was, about two weeks, I went in and took my time, and I cut it by two minutes. Each zone. I had eight zones around, printed around. I cut it by two minutes. So, went from, I think, 11 minutes to nine. If everybody just did that, if everybody just said, still going to water, you know, but just subtract like two minutes, that's all we need. That would, that would get us over the hump. Because we just need a little bit, and we can get there.
So, that's what you're going to address the mayor's letter?
I'm going to try and make his letter voluntary, because the flip side of this is, we come back and we have to change the ordinance. But there's going to be like a level, you know, five, which is, we make it what it needs to be.
Yeah. When's the next mayor's letter coming up?
The watering's on 15th.
Have you, have you compared it to our water two months ago? Have we cut back at all, or no, people are like in a panic, so now they're watering more?
When we went from, when we first imposed stage three, we went to stage three, the watering went up 24%.
I remember seeing that.
Usage went up over 20%, as soon as we went on restrictions. Now, again, I can't tell if that was because of confusion, or whether that was literally people running out there and saying, I've been watering for 30 minutes a week, now it's only two days, I'm going to be 15 of 15. But I do have, I just have, I've got the log sheets for the last three months, I've got the daily reports. And I'm going to put out a chart of the three months, every day, for the mayor's letter. And here's, here's, basically, you're going to see a line, like, this is our production, this is our usage on certain days. You're exceeding what we can produce. And that's, you know, those days, we just have to be, we just have to be careful. We're not in danger of running out of water. It's just, you know, it's like if you're, you know, you just don't like getting your, your gas tank below an eighth.
Yeah, you don't have a cushion.
We don't have the normal fire flow that we want, you know? Normally in summer, the tanks never get below half. And when they're below half, they're, it's just for a couple of hours, and then, then we catch up. But we're just not...
If they had an emergency, like a fire, you know? If there's a fire, there's, we can't provide any water. It'll all have to be a fire.
It'll be great, great. It'll be, they'll be out of water fighting. But they know that. All they can do is see planes, and any fire, they can go with these drop tanks.
But we can't provide any assistance at all. Previously, there's drop tanks, and we can provide water.
Right, they would just hose it to Andy Drop Tank. And the fire department doesn't, you know, I've been in contact. They know where we're at. So, they're very aware that we're a little bit compromised right now. But, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see. The other options are, we'd, you know, we just basically drop the system pressure. So, you're going to wake up in the morning, instead of 60 PSI, you're going to have four. And maybe it'll sink in. When you try and turn the faucets on, it comes out very slowly. That's the only dial that we can turn, because we'll just drop the system pressure. We'll be dropping it up. And they'll figure it out. But anyway, so that's kind of where we're at. Again, everything is stable.
Yeah, I like Carol's point, let's try to do some education.
I agree.
Be too drastic, but it's getting to that point where it's not like that summer.
Now, one of the things I've, we're working on, which I think might be both interesting and helpful, is we're trying to run now a, we're running conduit over the wells. We're trying to hardwire an internet connection in the pump house. And hook up some cables. So, we can have real time on the...
Of the dials instead?
Yeah, of the levels. So, anybody can, you know, I, I may, I've decided, I may educate some people and deputize them to be well watchers. And just randomly look at the, look at the readings, and call me if it gets below a certain number. Or we just put something on the link to say, you know, and then just, whatever, anybody that wants to, you can, you know, go to this internet site, you can see the dials. And you can watch it going down. And, you know, if you see it below X, call.
Well, I'll try to make a point coming up here, hearing those critical times, because I'm just down the street checking that, and like, you know, I was doing that, that...
But you definitely did that, and I appreciate it.
I kind of, during the week, I kind of assumed you were up here. Should I come more often during the week if it works well?
No, obviously not.
But yeah, I'll try to make a point, especially after the, you know, during the quarter, on July or after.
You only call up to 2:00 in the morning, really?
Yeah.
But, you know, that's kind of where we're at. Okay? All right, next up, okay, next up discussion, we'll do one on well and one on it. Okay, so, obviously, we have to put in a well. We knew we were always going to put in a well to meet impact fee calculations, so we knew that a new well was coming. I think the original plan was that when land plan started the plating process, between getting their development approved, and then actually starting infrastructure, you know, the roads and the water, all that kind of stuff, that would give us like a year to 18 months of lead time. And that's when we could start the well process. It's going to take about a year, maybe a little longer, to go through TCQ, and then actually drill the well. And once you drill a well, it's actually producing water, you've got to let it run on the ground for a while, because you've got to get the sand out of it, and you've got to let it run, and then you've got all this testing to do. It's kind of like certifying an aircraft. TCQ makes you go through a lot of hoop jumping before they'll certify that that's good for drinking water. So, that's like at least a year proposition. But we were hoping, you know, land plan, you know, we just wait for that, and that would be the trigger. Unfortunately, the trigger now is the octagon drop. So, that's our trigger. So, we're going to do it now. The, the well cost, according to the impact fees, about a million and a half dollars. Now, I don't think it's going to cost that much, because I think that designed call for a Trinity well, down the Trinity, which we're not going to do. We're going to do a Plexi well. So, my guess is, just a ballpark number, is it's going to be somewhere between 700 to a million, I guess. But the, the first thing we have to do is, we, the engineers have to design.
It's impact fee also, I think, assuming a little bit, assume that Lake Crest or Woodcrest lot too, right?
Correct.
Since they're further than the infrastructure.
So, the first thing we have to do is, we have to come up with a site, you know, we have a couple of different sites possible for that. Then we have to task the engineer. So, in order to put in a well, TCQ has to approve it, obviously, it's drinking water. It has to be designed, and the plant, even though it's a hole in the ground, and they haven't changed holes, you know, since the Egyptians, but still, they have to engineer, stamp the documents, has to go through engineering TCQ, even though it's pretty basic stuff. But it doesn't matter. We, you have to do that. That's what we have to do. It has to be signed by an engineer. I've talked to the engineers about that, they're ready to move forward. They just need data from us. So, part of those log sheets is me collecting all the data, so I can give them flow rates and those kind of things. We already did the well study last year. We did a well study, which, which geologists came out and did their thing. So, that's already done, which is good. That saves us time. That's already on the shelf, ready to go.
What did the well study tell us?
It was trying to look at different locations and try and see like what they thought the likelihood is, how many gallons per minute, you know, the different aquifers that are available here, you know? Basically, this is kind of like a research project.
And also looks at other wells in the area, and what their productions are, and proximity to them.
It kind of gives you a best guess to say, look, if that little well is putting out, you know, 80, and over there across the street's 80, and, you know, two in Rocket, they're 80, then trying to design to put out 400, your dream. So, you can put a bigger motor in all you want, but, you know, there's a limit.
As we know, if the watering fair, that it's out.
Yeah, so, so that was the well study. And that feeds into their engineering. And, and that's kind of what we have to do. There's two sites we're kind of kicking around. The idea is, you know, one site we're not going to do is 20 feet from the other two wells, like our prior assessors did many years ago. The optimal is 5,000 feet. We don't have 5,000 feet, unless we want to bring the lake, and that's not going to happen. So, the two locations we're looking at potentially would be over where the mailboxes are. The advantage of going where the mailboxes are is that we can get an easement, we already have easements over there. And that is the area where land plan is going to have the trailhead right there. And so, that's an area which has room. Only, what we need for space wise is, we need about, around space, we need is about half of, about half the state. It's about from here down, that's the footprint of the well.
After it's in.
What?
After it's in.
After it's in, right, right. Still got to move around all the pipe.
And you need about the size of the park to put it in.
You know, so, you know, still have to get the drilling rig in there. Now, the advantage of that site is that our water main for the city is on that side of the street. So, we could easily run a new main right up Hyridge and tie in here. If you cross sewer lines, you get near sewer lines, you've got to sleeve it, because you can't get water in sewer, and then so many feet of each other, there's things you've got to do. So, the advantage of that one is, it's, it's, the site is, is free. And we could use, we could move the mailboxes and use it kind of an access road to pull off the mailboxes, but also be a little road, little driveway to get to the well. So, we could kill two birds with one stone. The other advantage of doing that is, that would allow us potentially to sell the Woodcrest lot for somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000. But we can now dispose of that, because that would be surplus.
That law is no longer really ideal, because when we were talking about using that lot, that was also, we do a construction plan plan. So, when that other street comes in to connect to Stone, we've already tore things up, we're already over there. So, now it's, it's hard to get to if you don't already have a construction plan, so that's hard to, trying to, trying to manage the infrastructure constantly.
So, you can imagine on that Woodcrest lot, one option, the shortest distance is going through a power pole, it's through the lots. And we don't want to do that. I mean, you'd have to come out the front of the lot, go down the Woodcrest, and what's at the bottom of Woodcrest and Hyridge? You know what's there?
Lift station.
Our biggest lift station in the whole city is right there. We would be right in front of our biggest lift station in the whole city. Then, so...
So, you have kids leaving here.
We'd have to do super protection there, because all the sewer lines are, you know, all of the shores runs that lift station. All of Hyridge runs that lift station. That is, everything runs, so. Then we got all of Hyridge, and every driveway, we got a full run every driveway, as we have up Hyridge, and then we got to go to Melody. Right?
Yeah, further, a lot further.
So, the good is, it's further away. Right? But...
That was one of the reasons why you picked it, the lot came available, and it was to have the distance.
And it had more distance. Now, you know, from an engineering standpoint, if we're 700 feet away, or we're 1,100 feet away, it doesn't matter. I don't think so. Further's better, but I don't think margin on the margin, that's going to be that big a difference. So, to me, there's advantages of doing the closer, it's much easier to plumb.
Yeah.
No sweeping required.
There's power there too.
There's already three face power right above.
And the geology studies said there's options down under there.
Yeah, it's, the other advantage for us is it's downhill. It's lower. Mars, again. The hillside lot's probably another 30 feet, an elevation higher, I'm sorry, the Woodcrest lot. But, you know, that's coming, because we have to start on the nap. And again, it's not news, we never going to put it along. That's why it's in the impact fee statement. And if we front them on it, if we, if we get it going, we borrow the money to put it in, we'll get reimbursed. It's part of the impact fees. So, it's just, unfortunately, we're going to have to front them on it. We're going to have to put it in now. And then, we'll get reimbursed over time. That's your answer. I don't see us being on, again, going on water stage four for the next five years, isn't going to matter, because land plan, we know we have to do it for development, we have to put it in no matter what. There is no way around putting it in. So, let's just get it in. So, that is, that's, that's what's happening there. As far as the water rates go, what I've done is, I've just penciled in, I've thrown some water rates. As you can see, our water rates are about, so what I've done is, I, I basically looked at it and said, we need to generate a lot more money. So, the rule of thumb of our water rates has always been that everybody else charges much higher water rates than we do. There's two reasons for that. One reason is because they're buying more, they have to buy it from the pipeline. The second thing is, the cities are different to us. They've got balls in the sky, they've borrowed money, you know, they, they have different cost structures than we do. We paid off our utility loans like in 2009. So, we don't have any loans on the utility system. We were making enough with the rates we had to do, the CapEx we needed, putting the pumps, the new storage tank. You know, we built up our reserves, and we spent them down, and we built them up, and we spent them down. There's no real reason to raise the rates, even though we were 50% below everybody else. Which is, I believe, the right way to do it. There's no reason to raise rates, you don't need them on rent. Now, the flip side of that is, I think the rates being so low, people have been using a buttload of water because the rates are so low. So, you know, there is a little bit of that. But, so what I'm proposing is, we, we have to raise the rate. If we raise the rate, so what these numbers represent is escalating rate increase. So, it's, it's taking up the 20,000, up to 20,000 gallons, that's about a 20% rate increase. And for the, up to 50,000, that's going up 40%. The greater than 50,000, that's going up 60%. So, you can see, it's, it's escalating, the more you use. Now, I can tell you, the next question you would ask me based on the simulation is, you know, so how many people are in the 20 to 50,000? So, about, basically, in winter, nobody is above 20,000, based on the, based on the last year. Not a single person who's more than 20,000 for any of the winter. So, they were not, they were always in the first two tiers. In the summertime, about, so right about 30% of the city, so two thirds of the city is in the first two tiers. One third of the city is in the top two. And of those, nearly every single one lives in the shores. So, everybody but the shores, almost the entire year round, everybody but the shores is in the first two categories. In the summertime, the shores move up to the next two. In the wintertime, nobody's in the next two. If, if we, if we adopt these rates, this will generate about an extra $40,000, estimating.
Assuming they don't curb their habits.
That's right. Assuming it's relaxed, that's, that's a best case scenario. And that would go toward, obviously, we're going to have to finance putting it up. And that, that's coming. So, kind of, the next process, so the next step of the thing is, the engineer gets tasked